Meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Just a note Supervisor Ung is not here, he won't be calling in as he is overseas right now. Wish him a good time with his family, so with that we'll go to number one is the approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero. Onto the consent agenda, items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes from the May sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four from County Auditor, Ms. Shelskaff, is approval of liquor license application for Correctionville Golf Club. And item B is approval of liquor license application for Oscar Carl Vineyard in Sioux City, Iowa. Number five from Human Resources, Ms. Melissa Thomas, is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And B, authorization to initiate a hiring process. Number six from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs, consideration of permit to work in the county right of way on Garner Avenue. And lastly, County Treasurer Tina Bertrand, approved property tax refund request for parcel ending in six zero two-two in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. And with that, I will move it.
Second.
Alright, motion by Bittenger, second by Carper. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, motion passes four to zero. And with that, leads us into item number eight from the Moville Community Development Association, Inc. And so with that, I'm gonna call everyone forward. This is the discussion and consideration of financial support for the Moville area childcare center. We will have the presentation on the screen as well, so with that if you could, all three of you just introduce yourself and just your position with McDy, so.
I'm Steve Axwell, I'm a retired veterinarian and I'm president of the Moville Community Development Area Incorporated. This is Robin Beck, she works for Security National Bank, this is Becky Thomas, and she works for Norium up in La Mars. So anyway, we also have Ryan Crichton, CMBA, that's been working on the project, and then also Christina, that you may know from Crichton and Center, so.
Awesome.
Since these two are a lot better looking than I am.
Could you turn on that secondary microphone? Yes, thank you ma'am, just hit it one more time, it should light up, there we go.
Alright. Okay, Steve said, I'm Robin Beck from McDy. Just wanna thank you all for the opportunity to present here today and to let you know we're here because we believe that with your support, we can create real measurable change in our county. For the last several years, we have worked on a project that has found a huge problem in rural Woodbury County and everywhere really. It's impacted our residents and our kiddos and our workforce. We've worked diligently to create a solution for that and we've, we're using great partnerships as well as creative resources to do so. So we're excited for the opportunity to be, bring you all along in that journey and to help us to the finish line. We truly believe in our tagline, Karen. We're growing together, building tomorrow. The next one. Just a little bit about McDy, we've been around a long time, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit incorporated in nineteen sixty-one. We're governed by a board of directors who are, who are all volunteer community leaders in our, in our area. And fun fact, of all of our board, we are all out of the childcare game. But, so we're not doing it for our own personal advantage, but.
It is fun to have that.
Yeah. So we bring over six decades of community-driven economic development to us, to this project.
Yes, a little bit about where we've been, our timeline. We officially started this in twenty twenty-two, it's been going on for a while, we've been hearing that feedback from our community for years. But in twenty twenty-two, we got serious about it and we partnered with the city of Moville to go out and say, this is what we're hearing, let's get some facts, let's get some data. And that's just what we did, we worked with First Children's Finance to assess the local childcare needs and it identified the gap for us that we were, were gonna target. So really that was twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Today, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about where we got to our project today in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. I think an exciting part, as we look at this project, is this bottom part, operational target twenty twenty-six. So really, we have a potential to impact Woodbury County in twenty twenty-six. Now, I know this was in your packet and then hopefully you've read all of them, but the parent testimonials are great, like they really, that's what's been driving us along the way. Their stories are impactful, they impact their jobs, they impact our economy and they are, they're, they're real for Woodbury County and especially when you look at the rural folks, like there is a real need and that's, that's something that we're glad to address. So Karen, there's one more slide to those, we can just go through those, that's great. So then as we get to the next slide Karen, the childcare market analysis, so we talked about that. So we wanted the data, right, tell us the facts. We've got these great parent testimonials, we've lived it, we know, we know people that have had these, these tough experiences. What it showed us is really a lot of information, but three, three key points that we would really like to have you guys here, here with us today is when it comes to childcare, there's a growing need, it's growing, it's not going away, more parents, more families have both parents working in the workforce. Difficulty, people are experiencing difficulty, it's stressful. It, it causes a lot of challenges. And last but not least, it's an impact on our jobs. The number of people that are late to work due to this or just quite frankly can't go at all is, is a real challenge.
So with that, we, we reached a point where we identified the problem, right? And then it was time to develop a solution. So we knew it would be important to partner with someone who, who would have a strong reputation and have knowledge and expertise in this industry, that we could create a quality and sustainable operation. And that's where the Crichton comes in. They easily meet those right criteria for us and we're fortunate that they were able to consult with us on this, this project. So they helped us first identify, you know, we, we explored building a new building. We looked all through our town at various unused buildings and, you know, researched what it would take to revitalize those and what, and how those could work. Ultimately, what we just decided, it was clear that the most responsible use for our community dollars was to invest in a building that was underutilized that we could re-revitalize. And really, we found the perfect building for that in the Methodist Church. The Sunday School wing has become mostly vacant and, but it's an amazing space for kids to thrive, there's classrooms already in it that just need some care. The building itself sits in a prime location, intersection of Highway twenty and one forty. So it's not only a benefit to Moville, but also rural Woodbury County. We know that a lot of, most of the people who are in the workforce in our small towns of, you know, not just Moville, but Correctionville and Anthem and Pearson and Climbing Hill and surrounding areas, a lot of them drive right through Highway twenty, right past this intersection. So it can help not just Moville, but others as well. Next slide, it just shows the proposed layout of the building, kind of what those classrooms could look like, but ultimately, we would be able to serve over fifty kiddos in here, which is, you know, really big impact. And not only is it fifty kids, but it, infants through age twelve. You know, there are other places that have preschools, but very, you know, very few childcare centers around us that take infants. So it's great that we can have that kind of an impact.
So as we look at this, as we've kicked off this engagement with the community, we've been really pleased with the community's support and excitement. One of the neat things about our project is the groups, the different types of groups that we have involved. So McDy really is the project facilitator and fundraising coordinator. We look at the Methodist Church, really working to under, this underli, underutilized facility is a way to revitalize that and in a key location, that prime location off of Highway twenty is, is good. City of Moville has offered financial support and public works assistance. The Woodbury Central School is a half a mile away from us, so there's possibilities there with transportation and food service. And then Crichton Center we've talked about, and then CMBA, having a local group supporting us with our architect needs to make sure we're spending every one of our dollars efficiently. So as we look at the, the employment and the economic development, the cool part about, another, another great part about this is fifteen full-time positions. In Woodbury County, rural Woodbury County, that is something we're, we're excited to offer and our community's excited for that as well. Woodbury Central School has the potential to partner with us for CDA and CTE programs. That's a great way to continue, for us to continue focusing on the workforce and giving them that education needs. And obviously, the increased availability of childcare will be a positive impact on our economic environment in Woodbury Rural County.
Yeah, so moving on to the project budget, the project was, was shared with you in your packets, but ultimately, a good portion of the budget is going towards renovations of an existing building. You know, we recognize that that provides a substantial savings to what it would cost to build new. And it also enhances the appearance of one of the prominent buildings that's, you know, at a busy intersection in our county. So there's also the safety and compliance regula, regulations and requirements that have to be met for a licensed facility and then just furnishing those, those rooms with age-appropriate furnishings for the kids. Our fundraising to date is something that we've been working through for quite some time, what we've got to now, you know, we have that project goal of nine hundred and fifty thousand. So far, we've raised two hundred and sixty of that, as Becky mentioned, those partnerships that have been so helpful for us and important to us. You know, you really see this, the city and the different organizations, nonprofit organizations and, and things in our community that are coming together and, and supporting the project along with those private funds. We're gonna continue to fundraise and look for different funding sources, I guess, starting here with you guys and then continuing those private fundraising. We also, you know, are looking at a variety of different grants, you know, including those that would potentially have a dollar matching, you know, the MURD grant would allow us to take your dollars and double them potentially. So we're, we're definitely looking at those opportunities and trying to maximize our dollars.
So yeah, moving on to the next slide and the last slide really is our requests, what we're here today. So requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Board of Supervisors to support us, really we, we are very passionate about this project, we think that, we do believe that the items that we're sharing here today, the, the key points really are fifty, over fifty childcare positions. Public and private partnership that we're gonna continue, the support is there. Ability to have fifteen new positions in Woodbury County. Betterment of the county, it's not just Moville, there's a lot of flow coming through there. And if you live in rural county, you know how hard it is and how impactful that can be for all of these. It's one mile away, one minute away, less than a mile away from Highway twenty. And I, as we look to be efficient with the existing, with revitalizing the facility, the fall of twenty twenty-six is, that operational data is something that people are, are watching for. So they're, they're hoping that we can bring this to fruition, so.
So with that, you know, we just wanna thank you for your consideration and we, we do have our contact information here if you wanna ask us any questions, but afterwards, but in the meantime, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have now.
Thank you for, for coming and presenting. As we all know, I think most of, and all of us have kids, yeah, taking care of children is a very high honor and priority. And so this is great. My question for you, one question I have is if you were, let's just say if you wanted to get all your funding, does, is, are you guys, would you take out loans to get the project started and going? Or are you trying to go all cash, just help me understand that just briefly?
So we are trying to get all this cash upfront and so that we don't have that, the loans, but we also are aware of either low interest rate funding or things like that that we could utilize, yes.
Is all the funding that you guys are looking for, is that going towards construction only or is that to help fund positions or anything like that as well?
So it's all for the capital campaign and getting everything up and running. And then that's where, you know, the operation costs and things like that will fall on the operator of the, of the childcare.
So I think what's neat about this is my wife and I are currently reading a book called Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And it's a, it's about a veterinarian and a farmer from a small town that got involved and worked his way up the government ladder. And he was a big believer in economic development being funded and kind of run by government. And then once he got in there, he figured out that true and real good economic development does not come from the top down. It's gotta go from the bottom up. And just before I got on the Board of Supervisors, and Dan may have been on at this time, you know, Woodbury County had a rural economic development position that hadn't been filled in some time and was ultimately defunded and deauthorized and we haven't funded it since in the last three years. And my memory, if Dan can maybe correct me, was somewhere around a ninety to a hundred thousand dollar budget is what that line item was. And at the time, I, when I was running, I ran that that was something I wanted to bring back that I thought was important for rural Woodbury County. And then you get involved with groups like McDy and ACDC out of Anthem that are doing that type of work out in the community. It's amazing what you as volunteers do and, and lots of volunteers from ACDC as well. And it's, this is an incredible opportunity and I know that in the time that our previous Economic Development Director was here, for the many years that he was here and despite his best efforts, I don't know that he presented one new job. And so this does not happen very often, and so I applaud you for taking the initiative on this and, and doing that needs assessment, it was, it was interesting to read that. And so I, I just can't say enough good things about this, this is not something that happens every day. And what I think could happen from this is that if, if, as a board, if we can show support for projects like this that come from the grassroots level, have a great deal of public, private and local partnerships, which we totally have here, that this can be replicated in other communities across the county, because it's not just this portion of Woodbury County that has this issue. You could be in the southern west part of the county, you could be in the southeast part of the county, they all have these same issues with, with childcare. And so inversely, I look at other communities around us that are doing something similar to this. So for those who don't know, Marcus, Iowa, which is my hometown and we, we still farm, I have a lot of family up there, they had a huge demand for daycare as well. And they actually, the school ended up having a bond referendum to build a daycare as part of the school. And as taxpayers up there, I, I, we were opposed, you know, we did not see that as something that the school should be bonding for. But the daycare has been up and running for several years and you could not deny the results of what it's done for that community. The business community has exploded up there. Young families are moving in, they're planning an expansion of their business park, they're planning a housing expansion, they just redid the golf course. It's incredible. And this daycare runs from six, I think six in the morning till seven at night. And it allows for various types of families, whatever job that they're doing, to have a place for their kids to go. And I think that that's something similar here. So based on the experience that I've seen and what I've seen, I will be fully supportive of this ask. I think it's, I think it's extremely appropriate. And the three years that I've been on the board, we haven't had anything close to this come across. And we may not have anything like this for years to come. But I think it will benefit all of Woodbury County and it's, it is a definite need. And we've got an aging populace of care providers that are on their way out to retirement. I wish them all the best, but that's just the reality that we live in. And so we have a massive labor shortage here in the county and Sioux City and this would be a great way to, to try to combat that.
Yeah, and I think this would, you know, not only just impact the fifteen people that would be working there, there's, if you're gonna have a hundred children in this building, you know, there's probably forty to fifty other people it's gonna affect and so they won't have to drive everywhere. And, and so, but the childcare is very important, you know, the security, protection of children is, is extremely important to us. So I'm in favor of this. One thing about the, the church, I think there was a, it showed that the church gave seventy thousand. Was that just from the local church or is that from the?
That's the local church, yes.
That was a local church.
Wow.
And this is a Methodist church, is that right?
Yes.
I was wondering if the Methodist organization itself would be able to sew into that as well.
We'll add that into our list.
That's a good thought Kent, yeah. So with that, right, the, the big question is how much, right?
Sure.
Right, we're, I agree, I agree with you guys, we're for this, it's a good thing. Ryan, can you give us an update regarding where the funds could come for this?
Do you want, I can present with gaming revenues and lost.
Yeah, that would be good.
And do you want the balances? I have printouts that will give us the totals right now.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep, that'd be great.
So.
Motion to receive.
Oh, second.
Alright, second by, the, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson to receive, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero. Alright, gaming, alright. Thank you Ryan. You just have three of these for lost? Do you have more?
Thought I, maybe there was more in the game, but I thought I had six for each.
I've got double gaming, here, give that to Michelle. Was there? You got gaming, that's lost, this is gaming, gaming. You got one lost there Kent?
This is.
I don't have a loss.
I have gaming.
Alright, I'll share with Mark, alright, we'll share.
Sorry, I thought I had gotten six of each.
Honestly, what it is, is that I'm a cyclone and he's a Hawkeye. He still hasn't gotten over that I went to the superior school, so he's just trying to.
Michelle also has the spreadsheet up on the screen, so this is the gaming.
I thought he was gonna say Michelle's also a cyclone.
I'm outnumbered here, so.
What about, go Buckeyes? Yeah, okay, alright, I'll be quiet.
At least they're Big Ten.
Yeah, at least Big Ten, sure. Continue.
Alright, but gaming is, you know, less restraints on it, so it's open, but right now the, this is, this spreadsheet is the current fund balance, there is currently two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, but there is allocated of ninety-eight thousand. So the current unallocated is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand as of right now. The next tab shows what the projection will be at the end of the year. So this fund would have two hundred and sixteen thousand. And then the last tab takes that beginning balance, estimates the revenue for the year and then what has already been approved for fiscal twenty-six funding. So at the end of twenty-six, it would be about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Three sixty-eight?
Three sixty, I'm a Hawkeye and I can't see either. On the lost side of things, which is for economic development, and I would think this would be a good project fitting under that, you know, purpose for this, is as of right now, again, the current fund balance is about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And at the end of the year, there would be about three hundred and nearly forty thousand available out of lost. And then the things that have been approved have for next fiscal year are pretty much similar to what has, you know, like the Ag Center, the hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand was approved for debt service relief and then there were the other projects. The one that hasn't been was that Sulan Initiative that was tabled. But considering all those that have been approved, it's about four hundred and forty thousand dollars available out of lost. And so that's, you know, the summary for the funds that are available.
I know that you're working on some grants that have kind of matching funds, is that something that you need, those funds in that account in order to get those matches, is it just a pledge that you need?
It'd be dollars and pledges.
Pledges work, yeah.
Pledge, okay. So you wouldn't necessarily have to, you know, cut a check right away, but there's, I mean, there's plenty of funds either, really either way, I guess, but.
One thing for us to consider as a board is, like kinda what you said Mark, this is kinda one of the first big asks we've had. One thing I would be concerned with as a board if, you know, we are supportive of this, but if we did the two full two fifty of, of other organizations come forward asking for money, I know it's case by case, merit by merit situation. My one concern is do we want to, that'd be, that'd be a lot to give out, that'd be the biggest, the biggest expenditure we've made for, for something like this in quite a few years from my understanding, from what I can find. So that's one thing to consider, yeah, how is, because you're gonna use this money to, to get a matching grant from MURD, right, is what you're hoping?
That's what we're hoping, yes.
Okay.
And the local option, that has to be spent on economic development, right?
Yes, that's the purpose of the fund.
Which it makes more sense, if we're gonna use any funds, keep gaming.
Yep, well, lost has got four forty unallocated, so that's, would take it down about half, you know. But it's also a one-time deal, wouldn't be ongoing. Cause then we'd still have three sixty-eight and gaming.
Other thoughts?
And I guess this, you know, me looking at it, you know, it is, it's a big ask, obviously, I mean, it's a great project, you guys have everything, you know, up and going. You know, it's, hopefully other communities look at this, you know, and say, hey, how did Moville do this and, you know, how are they getting there? Because I mean, I could see, you know, any small town or a little bit bigger towns doing the same thing. And so, I mean, just looking at our funds, looking at the budget you were in, I know lost is for local option, sales taxes is what it's for, is for economic development. You know, I guess kinda along lines of what I'm thinking, I'm thinking along, you know, like a hundred thousand for this possibly. I mean, and it's, you know, and reason being, I mean, you know, this is the biggest ask that I think, you know, I mean, obviously the biggest since I've been here, but I mean, looking at this, now that other communities hopefully will come in and look at it and say, hey, I mean, you know, maybe they wouldn't be as big as this or maybe you guys expand and, and you come back, you know, too, cause I think, you know, that Methodist church is, you know, I don't know what their thoughts are about possibly, you know, you know, expanding that, so. Just my thoughts on this.
I mean, with, with one thought is we could give some money now, we could see where you guys, you know, with fundraising where you're at four to five months and see where you're at, you know? Cause if we do, yeah, yeah, I, I was gonna say between seventy-five and a hundred, cause if you're gonna use that to apply for MURD grams, assuming it's coming up, right? The applications normally are coming in June, yep. That at least, potentially at least double that would help you. And then see where they're at, I get it, I know if you had more now, of course, that gets doubled. My only concern from a board perspective is just, we just don't know what's coming this next fiscal year. And trying to make sure that we have plenty of reserves, plenty of options, just in case something, God forbid, happens or we see price spikes or, you know, anything that we would need lost for, but, and that's why, that's what makes this hard, right? It's a, right, it's a give it, give it all to you, right? But it's a, so I, I don't, I don't, yeah. What's your thoughts Mark on that?
Well, I think that Moville gave twenty thousand, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So say Moville did, I mean, if you look at the, the population difference between them and the county as a ratio, I think a hundred thousand's, you know, too low. I can understand with, you know, what, what you guys are saying, and they could always come back and ask for more, but I think it's, it's more helpful now when they're going into grants to try to match as much as, as much as possible. And so I think that's something that we can, can, you know, you could kinda rob for you to pay Paul, right? So you give a hundred thousand, but then if they get a hundred thousand less and they come back for a hundred thousand later, you know, we, we really didn't, we really didn't help out all that much. You know, I don't know if, if two hundred helps some of you guys settle a little better, I just, I think when you look at what Moville was able to squeeze out and give as a percentage with, you know, sixteen hundred people and we're taking this off of a hundred and five thousand, you know, really two hundred or two fifty still isn't quite enough. But that's, that's kinda how I look at it, anyway.
Well, I guess, you know, kind of, sorry, I guess kinda my thoughts on it too are coming out of this budget cycle, I mean, obviously we used some money to lower the levy. And hopefully, you know, people saw that, but, you know, and they, I just, you know, I hate, this is obviously not what it's really supposed to be for, used for is lowering the levy and stuff like that. I mean, it can be and we did. But I think, you know, I'm still kinda, I'm gonna sit at probably the hundred thousand, I mean, it's a big ask and I think if, you know, people in the county go, you know, hey, look at our budget and then look at, you know, what the county did, you know, for, through the budget cycle here and say, well, we're gonna give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this. I mean, I, yeah, I would love to give every penny of it to it, you know, because it's, you know, you guys have it all set up and it's gonna be good, I mean, that's what you get, you know. you know, because it's, you know, you guys have it all set up and it's gonna be good, I mean, that's what you get, you know, what they need there. I just think with the budget that we're in, if people, you know, and a hundred thousand to me is a lot, so I think that's kind of where I'm still sitting.
You wanna, I'm assuming you wanna do the full two fifty, two hundred, two hundred and?
I'm not really set on any number, Dan, I just would like to help them out as, as best we can, you know, and they're on a timeline to try to get this up and running as soon as possible, and I think with CMBA and maybe their contractors, that they've got some stuff ready to go, and so it'd be nice to, to help them out. Kent hasn't weighed in, so we could see what he has to say down there.
You know, um.
Man, a few words.
I, uh, I don't really say too much, uh, but, um, you know, I, I would like to give the full amount, but, um, I'm just, you know, kind of wondering, you know, we don't know what's coming up in the future, um, I guess, uh, I would be, you know, willing to go to like one twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five thousand, hundred and fifty thousand, maybe hundred and fifty thousand be the max for me, but, uh, 'cause I just don't know, you know, if we're gonna need these funds for something else in the future, and, uh, but, uh, I know you're, you don't have much time, and you need an answer, so.
Sixty percent of the two fifty is a hundred and fifty K, that's over half.
That's where you're kinda at, Dan?
I, I would go over half, yeah. A hundred and fifty thousand, double that's three hundred K, that would put you roughly at needing three ninety left over to, to finish the project out.
I could support that.
Okay. Yeah. It is, it is hard sometimes, in my line of work, other line of work, yeah, in the church world, you'll be like, dude, take it all, here you go, I'll sell what I have and give it to you. But I do have to make sure in this role, we do have to make sure, the big picture, and I know you guys understand that, um, so I would, I would move a hundred and fifty thousand.
Out of local option.
Out of local option sales, yeah, tax to help, hold on, let me, let me, let me get to the agenda item. All right, I'll move to give a hundred and fifty thousand out of local option sales tax to McDy for the construction of a new childcare facility.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thanks to Karen.
Thanks for all your hard work, yeah.
Yeah, we're excited, this is great. Yeah, we wanna come see him once he gets open.
Keep your notes for the other communities.
So, yeah, please let us know, you know, if, you know, you get that MURD grant, we'd love to know, you know, that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you open up, uh, and once everything is set up, we'd love to come.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Moving on to item number nine from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs, uh, it's approval to accept the quotes for the new equipment and approve the engineer to sign purchase agreements.
Hello. All right, um, we looked at our equipment needs for this next year, and this is her fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We had budgeted one million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and so, um, looking at our list of needs, it does not match exactly with what we had budgeted, so, um, I had thought, as I had discussed a little bit earlier in the year, that maybe moving that dust pelletive of a hundred and fifty thousand into the equipment budget would help me look at all of our needs. So all of our needs for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is much bigger than our list, but, um, you know, narrowing it down to really what's gonna get our guys on the road and keep that equipment going on the road was two motor graders, a wheel loader, compact loader, in other words, a skid steer, um, two pickups, and two, uh, snow plow trucks. I, would you like me to go through the numbers of quotes that we saw? Or would you, are you okay with the total, um, need is one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents, kind of? Um, the trucks don't have, uh, what we were going to do for trade-ins, so that will lower those costs a little bit.
I think you should read the amounts out, so people can see just what some of the stuff costs, 'cause it's crazy.
Yeah, so, um, for, we were looking at the John Deere seven seventy-two G, um, model, so, um, with trade, the first one would come in at three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred. The second motor grader, again with trade, that's why there's only a bit of a price difference, is three hundred and forty-one thousand and one hundred dollars. A wheel loader for a six forty-four G, we have at two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The skid steer with a trailer will come in at a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Two pickup trucks. One, again, the price difference is because of trade, so one would cost forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents, and the other one would be forty-eight thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Again, so for these two snow plow trucks, this is not the bottom dollar that we'll actually be paying, but this is the cost of the truck with, uh, the dump truck and snow equipment on it, so the truck alone is a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars with the snow equipment and box, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Those are tandem trucks, by the way, sorry, I don't have that on that list. That means that the snow plow truck costs two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I have more information, I have tons of information, a whole binder of information, it's just, I, I want to know what you want to know, and I can give that to you.
So Laura, these two, uh, motor graders, they're three hundred and forty-six thousand and three hundred and forty-one thousand after trade, and for the good of the public, tell them how many motor graders we have in the county.
Yeah, nineteen?
Uh-huh, nineteen.
Yeah.
So, um, but as you see, um, again, with the trade for last year, we spent three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, and, uh, going through quotes with all of these vendors, we were able to really take out any part of that piece of equipment that we were not going to ever use, and we put in some, um, upgrades on different things to help our operators do a great job in comfort, so.
And how many miles of gravel road do we have in the county?
So we have thirteen hundred miles total, which a thousand is gravel road.
Lot of road.
Yeah.
Okay.
My initial comment is, uh, you know, I went through the whole hiring process for an engineer, and I wanted, I was really looking for someone that was looking to revamp our equipment, because our labor costs continue to go up as the hiring pool shrinks, and there's a lot of demand for these operator-type jobs, and you have to look at it that when these guys punch in, they have to be efficient with every hour that they're on the job. And a lot of the equipment we have does not allow them to be efficient, and so I am very happy to see this. It's, it's sad what it costs, that's the, that's the reality of the world we live in, and I, I, I wanted you to say some of those figures, you know, two hundred and sixty for a payloader, we've got, a wheel loader, we've got one in each district?
Yep.
Right? So that's four in the county. This is real life, what this stuff costs, but if we're going to have efficient labor, we gotta have good equipment.
And some of that was in that, uh, the snow plow truck is gonna be, I feel like, um, a lot of the concerns, a lot of the things that we're seeing continually, having to be fixed on our equipment, are, you know, we're gonna go with a better suspension, a better air ride, um, better brakes, putting some more of that snow plow equipment back, back in the middle of the truck to help, um, you know, with some weight distribution, just building a tougher truck.
And that was comments that I heard from constituents that worked on our trucks in the county, was that the ones that we had were so cheap, so bare that we were just beating them up just for everyday use, and then we were, sure, we were saving on the front end, but then the repairs were just eating us alive the whole way through, and we gotta get away from that, and when the, when they're in the shop getting repairs, we're not getting work done.
Right.
I mean, that's another part of it too. So what, what are you pulling? What are you pulling out of parts of your budget to fund this, or what's gonna go with that, or what?
Just, we had budgeted, um, because that new, um, the, the new dust control policy was still in effect when we were budgeting in December, and, uh, we were just going to move from that line item into the new equipment, um, line, that hundred and fifty thousand that was budgeted.
I'm good with that. Yeah, me too. Yeah, thank you, Laura, for all you've been doing for this equipment, I agree with Mark, we've, we're seeing savings and a lot of future forecasting and planning.
I didn't do much, I can compile the information that our foreman, uh, went and sat across the table from each one of these vendors, and literally asked about every part of our piece of equipment and how it can help us, or how it can save us money, so. That's where these numbers and these, this, this grade equipment is gonna come from, so, those conversations.
Okay, any further questions from the board? If not, I will, I'll move the board to accept the quotes for the new equipment and approve the engineer to sign purchase agreements.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. Item number ten, uh, from Tina Bertrand County Treasurer, this is, um, this is the notice to proceed for appraisal services for parcel ending in zero 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 two. You have, did everybody read the backup, the summary on this? Pretty much just on the street, executive summary, Woodbury County is working with the Iowa Department of Homeland Security in emergency management and assisting a resident who is potentially eligible for FEMA grant assistance for damage caused by the flooding that occurred in Woodbury County from June, uh, from June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four through June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and appraisal identifying the property value prior to the flood occurrence is required to be submitted, uh, with the application, so, uh, that is what, um, we are, the motion is, it's six hundred dollars will, will, is the financial impact, but that'll be reimbursed to the county upon approval of the application, so. What we need to move is the, we need, we need to approve then, uh, for me to sign the whole come appraisal to get that going, so.
Yeah, so this just goes into the FEMA buyout for the one, um, county resident that was affected by the flooding last year. We have to, as, as part of that FEMA buyout program, we have to have a appraisal. The county has to hire an independent appraiser to go out there and, and value that property prior to the flood. Tina Bertrand and I worked on this last week and, and called around and got quotes on this, and the lowest one we could find was six hundred dollars, which is, I think, very reasonable, and so, uh, the, and they've promised us that they can get this turnaround, uh, this appraisal done in time, that we can still help this family apply for their grant, so, um, uh, with that, I'll move it.
Second. All right, motion by Nelson, second by Carper, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero. Thank you to you and Tina for working on that.
Yep, big thanks.
Yeah, helping out, that's our, our citizens, it's good. Uh, number eleven from myself, uh, is the, um, lastly in our meeting here, it's, let me get to the agenda item here myself. All right, this is a funding request for Woodbury County Family Treatment Court, and so with that, invite, uh, for you ladies to come on up. And so, I've had the privilege of sitting in some of the meetings, also the Family Treatment Court coming to our church and using it for some of the events for the, for the parents and the kids, and so with that, if you ladies can introduce yourself in your role and just, um, present, they're asking for funding tonight, and so, go and take it away.
My name is Alyssa DeRose, and I am the Family Treatment Court Coordinator for Woodbury County. I've been the coordinator for Woodbury County, uh, Family Treatment Court since twenty nineteen, um, and Family Treatment Court has been around and operational in Woodbury County since two thousand eight. The goal of our program is for families, keeping families together, um, family reunification, and, um, assisting parents with support and, uh, offering community resources through, um, substance abuse, substance use disorder, uh, treatment, so they're making big strides, life changes, um, often come with, uh, different things that they're not expecting, um, twists and turns, um, needing, uh, to find, uh, you know, a new place to live, get on their feet, learn parenting skills, um, and so we wanna provide them with opportunities to do that, we, um, are, we meet weekly, and so part of that, um, you know, consists of our team, which is made up of, um, we have a judge, um, locally who oversees that weekly, and then, um, each, uh, HHS case managers, we have treatment providers, and we're all, um, just providing support for parents, finding out what barriers they're encountering on their journey and recovery, and then supporting behavior change, uh, one of the big parts of our program is, um, looking for that positive behavior change and supporting that through just small incentives or, or, um, larger, depending on, you know, what, what the behavior change is. We wanna promote that, and we want that to be long-term, um, for their health and, um, their family's togetherness, so.
And I'm Erin McClarty, I work at SHIP, Sulan Human Investment Partnership, um, I'm, uh, in my eighteenth year at SHIP, I'm the Programs Director. This, uh, Family Treatment Court, um, session is, not session, but rather, what you guys do as a coalition and how you serve the, um, community, and especially that adverse population for folks in the child welfare system who are trying to reunify in a healthy way with their children, aligns with SHIP's mission, um, for the community. And so, um, our part of this is being fiscal agent for the dollars that they receive, um, they're not allowed to ask for dollars, and so we are here on their behalf to manage the dollars and help them spend them, um, efficiently and according to the needs of the program.
All right, and so what, just for the, get some, our board, what are some of the needs, what would this money practically be going, going towards?
We have a variety of needs, so, um, you know, largely the incentive-based, um, recovery, or, um, we look for recovery behaviors and positive behavior change, and so when we see parents, you know, hitting recovery milestones, um, we've had parents come through and been involved in our program that hit an act, one year of recovery, which is a, a pretty big milestone. Um, and in order to keep that change rolling, you know, we wanna be able to, you know, offer those incentives along the way, and, I think transportation is, is one of those barriers, and obviously, you know, when they're finding housing, the, the amount of money that they're coming up with to put in for deposit and first month rent, they often are left with not much for groceries, or, um, you know, just the, the little things that go into, you know, starting back up on your own, um, having, um, a garbage can. We've had parents that say, yeah, I, I have the place, but I have nothing in it, um, you know, different things like that, and so, um, we don't want those barriers to, you know, take over and, and bring them the wrong way, you know, we wanna support them in the, in the right ways, so.
Offering support to them for graduation, once they make it through the program, um, celebrating them, um, also, uh, family events for them to go out together and have a healthy, clean, sober activities to do, I know, um, one of the things that we recently went in on was the pumpkin patch, um, so the family's gotta go out there and really enjoy that, and, um, so just seeing things like that that, um, mean so much to these families, um, really makes a difference for supporting them.
Yeah, and it's been neat, I've been there, right, with some of them have completed their graduation, right, yeah, a year-long, staying sober, off drugs, uh, chance to be reunified with your children, I mean, that's, that's a great thing, and and you're right, yeah, some of these things are going for things we may take for granted, right, trash can, paint, you know, a little extra price here and there for some groceries, right, and some of these parents would have nothing to start with, so. And it was cool at this church, and you guys had the, uh, the Christmas party at my church, so how do you have a Christmas party without addictive behaviors or just a booze fest, and how do you have a healthy interaction with your kids and create memories and all, so I think that stuff is, uh, it's, it's very meaningful, and I, I'm for one, I'm glad the hard work of this board, you guys, we get to help save money and do the hard work to be able to help, I think this is where the funds, where the county can be a blessing back and where we should be good stewards of the money to be able to
Hundred percent.
Help, help in this situation, you know, and so. So I, I have no problem with it, I'd be supportive of it, I know, I sit on the ship board, and I know they're good stewards of the money, so it's not gonna be spent on frivolous things or just at, you know, at random, so I have no question in the competence of the, for SHIP as a fiscal agent, so.
Yeah, no, I, I've got no problem either, uh, were you thinking out of gaming?
Yeah, for this one, I would say gaming, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, board members, you guys.
I'd move, uh, uh, paying a five thousand dollars out of gaming to, uh, is it to SHIP?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, I would say the motion should be to support the Family Treatment Court program.
Okay, sure.
I'll say that, Ms. Howard. All right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you ladies, thank you. All right.
I think this is the first time, other than Stee, we'll take you out of there, but we've had, we've had women on every agenda item, if you look at that.
Oh, wow.
So good job, I know some of our county employees, but thanks for making our communities better, I don't know that I've ever seen that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Mark.
And you too, Stee, you do a great job.
No, I, I would say, right, we have, there's some long days in this, in this, in this position, but there's also a lot of good days, a lot of good things going on, so these are two good things going on in the community. All right, item number twelve is reports on committee meetings, does anybody have any reports on committee meetings?
I had a conservation board meeting Thursday, they're, uh, still working through some of the FEMA damages, uh, specifically like Little Sioux Park. We had a few infrastructure issues there with the, uh, the We had a few infrastructure issues there with the, uh, the walking trail that goes all the way back into Correctionville, you know, washed that out. Secondary Roads has rebuilt that, but it hasn't been paved, it's just gravel. Um, the boat ramp washed out, we had some other issues down there, and it sounds like it's all been approved, but the FEMA thing has just been a terrible experience, and they, they, you know, they assign these people to your account, and then they just constantly are changing these people, and so then the next guy comes in, they start over, and so, but the bike trail, there, uh, I know that a couple of years ago, Secondary Roads had to run, I think, a culvert through the bike trail, and they had to tear up part of it, and it was gravel, and I got a lot of complaints about that, because there's elderly people like to walk, uh, children, families, that kind of stuff, and so, um, I think next week, we might see an agenda item from Conservation, if the board would pay for the paving of that walking trail, and then when the FEMA funds come in, they would reimburse us for that money, so then we could, so we could get that fixed, um, you know, hopefully soon, you know, before the start, uh, we get too heavy into the tourist season down there at Little Sioux Park. So there might be something there. They are, are doing the forming for the concession stand at Little Sioux Park, and so that project is moving right along, they, they think that, or that's kind of running ahead of schedule, so that's gonna be a great addition there. Um, last night, I went to Correctionville City Council Meeting, discussed the Iowa Economic Development, the HUD funds that are available in the county for these, uh, these flood mitigation, um, relief, and so they actually have, the mayor, Ken Bauer down there in Correctionville, had a, had a phone call with, um, Rob Wick today, and they're, they've set up a walkthrough in Correctionville, so that's great. Hopefully, they can leverage some funds to help with the, uh, the flood cleanup and some of that mitigation. And then this morning, had a Soil Water Conservation Board meeting. Not a whole lot there, um, other than we're still discussing what happens when we have, I hate to even say it, but kind of belligerent farmers that end up losing topsoil under the road, and then Secondary Roads has to go out and put forth extra man effort, man hours in wear and tear on our equipment to move, um, soil off of the roads, and I just, I just don't think that's something the taxpayers should be, uh, footing the bill on. And so that was kind of another area of, of contention, and obviously, it's been dry, so we haven't seen a lot of that this spring, but, if it decides to start raining again, it could be an issue on some of these places, so. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? This is my week, I have all my meetings this week, so next week, be ready. I've got three reports for next week. All right, anybody else? All right, moving on, citizen concerns. Any citizen concerns, anything? Not all at once?
I want to thank you all for serving. Michelle, Karen.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Thank you. All right, with that, all right, let's move on to board concerns. I have a few, um, are you, I want to touch on, what, H eight, House File sixty-nine?
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Let me, we'll come back to that. Let me just update, let me start in reverse order. Um, I did speak yesterday for the board with Mike Montino about the HUD and the IEDA, all these applications, so I'll, me and Mike are gonna be working on just, uh, just seeing what else is out there, um, with this, and, um, I'll be bringing an agenda item next week to the board, so we can talk about it uh, more in detail, just about the route, what is the county from a county perspective, is there anything for us to do, so.
And there might be on some of our parks that sustained damage, there might be something we can do there, and I, I visit with, I forgot to mention that in my committee report, but I visit with our Conservation Director about that, too, that there may be funds that we could leverage there as well.
So next week, I'll have an agenda item for that, so we can discuss and begin that. Second of all, CIP, uh, just want to update all of our elected officials and department heads, uh, those that presented at our initial CIP hearing back a while ago, um, on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, we will do the approval, I'll put a some agenda item for that to approve those, uh, for fiscal year twenty-six, so just FYI for that. Um, that'll be where to say yes or no on that, from the board, so. I know you're out of town on the twenty-seventh, I believe, I will be here now, so, um, we can do one on the twenty-seventh, would you like to be here for that? Or, um, we can push it back one week until, is that June, um, is that next week?
June third was that next Tuesday, yeah, because I'm out of town on the twenty-seventh, and I won't be able to call in.
You won't be able to call in?
I will not, nope. I will be in a very remote lake, hopefully catching all the fish that Dan Heiselman left in Canada back this winter, so. Absolutely, when that daycare center opens, I'll fry some fish.
If you can't call in yet, why don't we push it back a week then?
Okay.
Let's do that, yeah.
That's fine.
I just remember now, okay. We'll push that back, so just an update, June third. Everyone good on that, June third, all the officials? Yeah, for the CIPs for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and then lastly, I just, my last board, it was just yesterday, I know, we were talking, Mark and I, uh, the Senate passed House File six three seven, I mean, six three, six three nine, excuse me, where that, uh, would ban the use of eminent domain, uh, and for pipelines in state, and so, um, I want to just first say thank you to Kevin Alons for, uh, for, for getting this going and to force the vote on the Senate floor for that. Uh, I will say it's a shame it took the Senate this long, uh, to get, to get to that, to vote against that, which is the will of people, our ru- our rural citizens, uh, don't want that, Woodbury County has been, you know, uh, leading the charge in that, uh, to get that stopped as well, and so, uh, I wanted to encourage all of our, our citizens to call the governor's office and encourage her to sign the bill and not veto it, the number is five one five, two eight one, five two one one. That's five one five, two eight one, five two one one, that's the office, their number, so. But I just want to say thanks to Kevin and the other senators that stood up and forced the vote, and, um, and that's all.
And that's House File six thirty-nine.
Yeah, six thirty-nine, excuse me.
Yeah, and, and I think that's great, Dan, we need to let the governor's office know they need to sign this, and I think you and I were both up late last night watching the, the Senate debate. So if you wonder how much fun we have at our house at night, we're up watching this.
Yeah.
Um, but actually, I, I had not watched that before, but it was, it was a very contentious, I mean, it was unbelievable, and to us out on the street, it's not a contentious issue.
Right.
But just to a very few that get political donations from a certain someone, they've been able to tie this thing up, and, and so I hope that people, you know, these, these, these folks that are affected have been for years now, have spent so much of their time, so much of their money, going to the Capitol, going to local meetings, coming here, suing these people, being tied up in court, going to IUB hearings, and so, it's a pretty easy thing for the rest of us to do, to call down or send an email to the governor's office, asking her to sign this, because I think, you know, enough's been enough, it's been multiple years here. Uh, Woodbury County, we have stood up for our landowners, and we're still in litigation on that, trying to defend our people's rights, and, and rightfully so, but it's just a shame that it never should have come to this, so. I was very proud of those Republicans and Democrats last night that held the line and got it across the finish line into the House, you know, the House passed it overwhelmingly, so to, to the Republicans and Democrats in the House that passed it, you know, thank you. But now it's time for the governor to, to end this bad chapter.
Yeah, I agree.
Well said. Let's call the governor's office.
Yep. All right, anything else, any board concerns?
Just one thing, it's a little ways out, but, uh,
Microphone, Kent.
Just, uh, it's a little ways out, but I just want to let you know about it, uh, June third, I may have surgery, so I might go on June third, so.
All right. Thank you for that update, yeah. All right.